Please join me as I pray. Our degration heavenly father, we thank you for this today. We thank you for this opportunity to come and do the business of the city of Cartersville. We ask that you would go forth, that you would give us wisdom as we make decisions. Also ask a special blessing on the Florida family tonight and the loss of one loved one. Ask that you would be with them, comfort them, and show them grace and mercy during this time. Bless us now and may we go, may everything that we do glorify you, and it's in your name you pray. Amen. You want me to have the pledge? Apply the pledge.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's take the roll please.
Kerry Pies, Ward one here. Jay Steph, Ward two.
Here.
Kerry Roth, Ward three.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward four.
Here.
Kerry Fox, Ward five.
Here.
Taffery, Ward six.
Thank you, Julia. As Assistant City Attorney David Archer says, it's seven o'clock when I say it is. So evidently I was a little bit slow doing that, so we missed about a minute or so. We'll be okay. We'll promise we'll try to make up for it on the back end. First order business is approval of our council meeting minutes from September 21st. And council, you've had an opportunity to review these minutes in advance of tonight's meeting. And if there are any edits, now's the time to note those. If there are none, motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Mr. Lovell, you have the first item tonight, which is an emergency reading of an ordinance.
Yes, Mayor. We had a correction of a typo in an ordinance earlier this year that we had a first reading on, but for whatever reason, we did not have the second reading on it. So I'm asking y'all tonight to do an emergency reading approving that correction on the gas rates.
Thank you.
It is recommended by Mr. Dixon for y'all's approval.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? If there's none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Yeah, not promoting a lot of civility with all this. Let's have a resolution pledging to practice and promote civility. Dan?
Yes, Mayor. This is from GMA. They have requested cities to sign on this resolution to practice promote civility, and it's recommended for your approval.
The GMA put this out during our summer conference, and was down there and saw that. And I always wanted to ask Dan to put it on the agenda. They simply make it available to cities, but this just really reaffirms what we continue to do as a council and as a local government, that we, when we disagree, we do so respectfully. We go about our business treating everybody with dignity and respect. So again, this affirmation, Dan brought it to you because I asked him to, so thank you for that. And if there's any other discussion, we can have it. If not, Chair, one, ten, a motion.
Motion to approve.
A second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Thank you for tolerating that. Now we'll move on to a couple of approval of agreements. Mr. Lovell.
Yes, Mayor. Although these items are listed as first reading of ordinances on the agenda, they should be approval, it should be approval of agreements. The agreements are the reinstatement and approval with GMA's pension folks, the 1967 retirement plan, and all of its conditions and addendums. And then the second item is the same amendment and restatement of the 2017 retirement plan, which will be transferring to GMA under their agreements. All agreements are recommended by staff for your approval. Y'all had previously approved the ordinances for these at a previous meeting, and in that ordinance, y'all have language that allows you to then, after the fact, approve the agreements once staff has approved it, which is why we don't need the first or second reading.
Can we pass both these items as one, or would you prefer us to do them separately?
I think you can do them as one.
Okay. Thank you. So Chair will entertain a motion to approve the amendment and restatement of the 1967 retirement plan and the 2017 retirement plan.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Mr. Morgan, you are up. Quit letting Derek be a bad influence on you in the background.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. The first item is a seasonal policy on electric disconnections. We realize that we need to institute a policy that says if there were a heat advisory in the county, that we would not do disconnects on that day in the summertime. We're asking for your approval of that, to add that to the ordinance.
Any questions or discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Freddie.
Thank you. This is an update on the fees in this utility rate portion of the ordinance. We realize those fees had not been updated with what we had already approved in the schedule of charges. We're asking permission to amend those rates.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Keep going.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a new vehicle for the administration department. We found that the use of multiple divisions using these vehicles, we found that once we'd given up a vehicle, we didn't have sufficient amount for municipal court or any of the others to go to training and also use it in daily use, and we're requesting that approval from you.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Yes, sir. The next one is a replacement pickup truck for the Parks and Recreation Department. They have several vehicles, one being an '04 F-150 they need to replace. He has a couple others we want to address in the next budget year. Requesting approval to purchase this 2023, it's a Ford F-150 crew cab.
Thank you. Does the old one go on Gov. deals, or are we trading that in, or what's the story?
Yes, sir. It'll be, it'll be put on Gov. deals. We'll have to surplus it. We'll go through, and then once it's transferred over to garage, we'll surplus it.
Thank you. Other questions? And if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Continue, please.
Yes, sir. The next is a pension fund investment advisory, their quarterly invoice. We received this from Sigal Marco. It's in the amount of $18,000. Requesting approval to pay this out of the pension fund.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you there. Freddie, Chief, you got the next three, sir.
Yes, sir. Good evening. This is a request to purchase two in-car camera systems from a utility associates for our new patrol cars. It'll be paid for out of the splash. The total cost is $21,857.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next is a request to purchase seven additional Motorola in-car radio systems for our additional cars, Bearcat and SWAT truck. Total cost is $28,153.23, and it'll be paid for with splash.
You all right? I thought you looked like you had a question or something.
Yeah. No, I was just looking at it and wondering if they're all like Bluetooth, and if they, or if they still have that little wire connecting up to the radio nowadays.
I would think they'd want them hardwired, but maybe that's a discussion. Maybe we can have that conversation. It's, it's my fault for recognizing you. I apologize.
It is. You shouldn't have. I wouldn't have said.
If there's any discussion, now's the time to have it. If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve the purchase.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously.
Last thing is a request to purchase two 2023 Chevrolet Tahoe police pursuit package vehicles. Total cost of the vehicles are $96,380. However, I'm requesting an additional $14,000 and a not to exceed of $110,380. Vehicles are being purchased from Gin Motor Company, and we're paying for it with federal asset forfeiture fines.
Nick, what's the lead time on those? They got them available for you?
Not right now.
Good.
So Chief found these in another department backed out buying all of them, so he found these two and moved forward.
Yeah. We have three more that we need to buy this year, but we, burden of hand.
Yeah, absolutely.
And they're difficult to come by nowadays.
So I know that we were, we had Ford Explorers. Are we going to this Tahoe?
Well.
Or is this because they're available and they're better deal?
I like the Tahoe better because they're bigger, and they can store more gear in it. We're carrying more gear nowadays. We can go either way, but they're pretty closely priced, and I like the idea of them being bigger.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve the purchase.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
While Mr. Hampton is making his way up, Chair will entertain a motion to add two items to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Two items added. Good evening, Mr. Hampton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
You've got one simple item tonight, right?
Very simple, very simple this time. No screw pumps. Electric system is recommending authorization of purchase, some SNC switching cubicles. We need these in order to be able to provide electric service to our customer choice customer hardware that we want. There's a total of four of them that we need, three PMH nines and one PMH 11 type. And then with the additional fusing and accessories that are needed for the cubicles, the total price was $138,975.25. It's a budgeted expense and sole source from Gresco. We do recommend your approval.
Thank you. Questions or discussion? If not, a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Porta?
Yes, Mayor. This is renewal for the Anthem for Health Insurance and Vision Insurance for our employees for 2024. After some negotiation, we are down to a 3.43% rate decrease for Anthem on the health side. It's recommended for your approval. On the vision side, it was a three-year rate guarantee that we're locked into. As part of this renewal, I am requesting the council to approve for those of the employees that select to go onto the health savings account, to the city pay 9% contribution towards that premium, which would mostly enti, hopefully entice them to join the health savings account because they are picking up a higher deductible. And then also change our model of what we, what the city contributes to us, 80% across the board for anybody either with single employee spouse, employee child, and family coverage. And that way, the employee picks up 20% of that cost, and this is recommended for your approval.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or discussion? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Mr. Roberts, you're up.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm looking for approval to resurface five tennis courts and to repurpose Court Six and Seven to permanent pickleball courts. We did send this out on RFP in July. We got back zero bids, so we did contact three, three companies, Signature Tennis, Talbot Tennis, and Court Makers, and Signature was the only one that could do the work this year. So they did give us a price of $98,400, and that would be to resurface courts, tape and fill cracks, sand and paint, and do all the things that they need to do. This is a budgeted expense. We had $80,000 from our operating, and the remaining 18 would be from capital expenses. I do approve, I mean, recommend approval.
Would that be for all the courts out there, or just?
That would be, it'll be seven of them. And then next year, we'll come back with the remaining seven.
So it's the three, I guess the five that are closest to Pine Grove, and then the two that are getting converted into pickleball courts?
And then two additional, yes.
Okay. Okay, got you.
Because eight, nine, and 10 are our worst conditions, so we want to make sure we go ahead and get those done.
Got you. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Forsyth, you got the next three, I believe.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The first item is replacement filter media for our wastewater plant filters. They are cloth media filters. They're sold in pallets of 32 replacement socks, is what they call. They're sole sourced item. We have to purchase from the manufacturer Aqua Aerobic Systems. That cost will be $16,448. It is a budgeted maintenance expense, recommended for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve the purchase.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Sidney.
Yes, sir. This is engagement agreement with the Talent Howell Law Firm of Coming, Georgia. I'm asking to engage Mr. Kevin Talent to negotiate on our behalf with the county for our storage allocation in Lake Altoona. This particular attorney has specific experience in this area of negotiation.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Final one for you, Sidney.
Yes, sir. This is sewer extension delegation agreement. The city water department is required to have, to be delegated the authority to approve sewer extensions in the city. That includes subdivisions and line extensions and things like, of that nature. We have been approved by the EPD for such a delegation. It requires the mayor's signature as well. Recommended for your approval, ability to sign such an agreement.
Thank you. Any discussion? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve the mayor's signature.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Dan, you got the next one.
Yes, sir. It's rescission of a couple agreements between Pine Grove acquisition of Dorothy Ferry and Walnut Grove, where we're going to allow them to get dirt off our property by the sewer admin building. That LLC that was buying the property across the street has fallen through, so these contracts can be rescinded at this point in time. It may come at a later date with another company, but just want to get council approval to rescind these two agreements.
I guess I could ask this in work session, but do we need to have that dirt moved, and does that increase our expense out there, or is it?
We were going to let them pay.
We're doing this courtesy, right?
We were going to do it as courtesy to them, because right now, we have access on the property, and if we need it off Walnut Grove owner's property in the future, if we, case we want to move some dirt to the airport or another city facility, we'd still have that availability. But right now, it's just sitting on our water admin site, and it's not causing us any harm. Eventually, we're going to have to move it. We may access to getting to the sewer plant on the backside, wanting those in a third round.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Foy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening. And just to give you a heads up, we're going to handle this item, the bid award, and then we're going to do the two other added items, then we'll come back to the discussion item. Okay? Thanks.
All right. The roof of the main office of the public works facility at 330 South Irwin Street needs repair. The existing roof there is 40 years old and has several leaks. Bids were requested for the roof replacement with 24-gauge standing seam metal panes and the replacement of gutters and downspouts. We received estimates proposals from Caliber Construction All Round Roofing and All Top Roofing ranging from $31,200 to $45,000. This is a budget item. Public Works recommends approval of the lowest estimate from all top roofing at $31,120 within amount not to exceed of $40,000 due to the potential need for decking repair when they get into the work.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on this item? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. This first added item.
Yes, Mayor. The first one is a, when we bought the property on Tennessee Street for that future multi-use recreational facility we were going to build there, it had a pre-existing tenant. That tenant has been maintaining the property for the city until such time as we get ready to start work there. So at this time, I'm asking the council to approve a fourth amendment to his lease to allow him to go through April 30th of next year on the property, which during that time, is my understanding, will probably start the design and consulting phase with what we're going there. So he may not be renewed past that point, or he may, I don't know.
In the meantime, he's maintaining that property.
Yeah. He's maintaining it so we don't have to.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this item? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Mr. Porta?
The next, yeah. The next item is, as y'all recall, we approved a moratorium for Carter Grove for new water hookups until such time as the county was able to provide sufficient water pressure and fire flow out there. That moratorium goes to the end of this year. However, we just received notice that the county is in their final testing stage of the improvements there, and so we anticipate in the very near future that they will meet those requirements. So what I'm proposing y'all do tonight by emergency ordinance is to approve authorizing the city manager to lift the moratorium once he receives the recommendation from the fire chief and the water superintendent that the water pressure out there meets city standards for fire flow and water service.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion on this? All right. If there's none, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. All right, Mr. Foy, back on you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
This item is labeled Mission Road Sidewalk Discussion.
Yes, sir. There's been a interest expressed in having pedestrian connectivity from, it's actually West Cherokee at Charles Street where sidewalk ends as you're walking out from downtown area, all the way out to where you're at before you get to Mission Estates, just past Duncan Drive. And we have obtained the services of a consultant to help get an engineer's cost estimate on what it would take to have a five-foot sidewalk done in phases. Each phase would entail dealing with a bridge and a railroad crossing, which of course adds to the cost, as well as curb, gutter, drainage features that would have to be modified to make everything work out and engineered correctly. So these are the numbers we have, and this information's just brought forth before you to kick off a discussion about where we might want to go down the road.
Yes, Mayor and Council. As you remember, you, back in March or April, you approved consultant, they did a study for us. There was petition by residents in the area for this sidewalk. As Stephen pointed out, if you provide the numbers, about $6.3 million just for a five-foot wide sidewalk. If you want a multi-use path, you're talking about double that number, just because of the fact that you're, we don't have easement along that way, and you're going to have, if you think the shoulders drop off, you're going to have to raise those up. Then if you get into a situation where we raise it too high or fill dirt with more, more over on top of our sewer system, we can only have sewer so far deep in the case they have to get into it. So those are the things that we're going to have to deal with if you want a multi-use path. As I shared in the work session, we were hoping to move forward to the next phase because basically what the consultant put together would allow us to apply for a TAP grant, which is through GDOT. But unfortunately, the TAP grant, I think the state is basically Transportation Alternative Programs is what they call that. We've been using that funding for Grassdale Road sidewalk. We've been waiting for that next round because we already have round, was it one or two rounds we've already got with Grassdale, was it?
I think two.
Two. I think we're going to go for three for Grassdale Road sidewalk to actually do the implementation of the sidewalk there. Where our plan was to apply for the TAP grant funding for Mission Road for engineering phase, which is probably four or $500,000 engineering.
Right.
But you know, with the governor giving a kind of tax-free holiday on fuel tax, that's kind of limited the GDOT pot of money for TAP program, so they have not released that grant. And Stephen, I think, has reached out to them, or Stephen or Wade, and their funding source is very limited on grant. So quite honestly, the only way I see, even if we were able to get to the engineering phase, the only way I see this unless we have some other revenue source is the 2026 splash to put this as an item in there, which is obviously three years out, but that's just the information right now for council. And basically, this, what you, what would you like to do with this at this point in time?
Okay. Any questions for Stephen at this point? Any discussion amongst council?
I just, I would just say, it's obviously something that people want in that area, and I'd really like us to, you know, keep working towards it. There are some people here tonight who were, who were here just to hear what we had to say about that. If y'all wouldn't mind raising your hands.
And you're welcome to speak. I mean, it's a discussion item. I mean, I'm not opposed if people care enough to show up. If you have anything, comment to add to the, to the discussion, you're certainly welcome to come up and speak. If not, that's fine, too.
And did you say it would be a double of what we're seeing?
If we were looking at the multi-use, it would double the number from 6.3 to 12 million to do a multi-use, because it's a five-foot wide sidewalk at the $6.3 million number. And a multi-use trail is typically 10 foot wide.
And the next splash is 2026.
Yes.
And if you would, for our clerk, your name and your address.
Alan Forsyth, 25 Blackfoot Trail, just, just off of Mission Road. I understand my career's in dollars and cents, and I know that a motion sometimes doesn't involve, you know, oil and water with facts and figures. But just to give you an idea of how I'm, why I'm here, my wife, Mary Ann Lewis Forsyth, passed away July 2nd of this year at age 46. And giving away my weekly secrets, I run from my house to Oak Hill Cemetery every Sunday morning, just so I can spend time there. Although I'm well aware that I don't feel like she's there, I feel like she's in her heavenly home, but that's the closest thing I can do. So in this path, you'll see Phase Two, where I take my life into my own hands, where the east end of the sidewalk ends, I hit the road until the new Jackson Farm subdivision. And the Jackson Farm and the Reserve, of course, they join, and then the sidewalk ends after the Reserve, and then I hit the road again until the Atco Trail. So the Atco, the Pettit Creek Trail conveniently goes across to Castle Road, which leads me to cross the road right into Oak Hill, which is highly convenient, and it's, and it's good for us. My boys are competitive runners. We would wear it out if we had access. So on an emotional note, it's very important to me to see this done. I would, I would love to say that I could write a check to get that done, but I cannot. But I appreciate you entertaining this, and as I started to look into this, I had no idea this was rolling already, so I was pleased to see that it had already been discussed. So I feel like as Cartersville grows, that it's just something that needs to be done. If we're going to have, if we're going to talk green, we can talk feet, and I think if feet connects all the city, it's a great deal. My boys are, will be eighth generation Cartersville Bartow County, and to see this done would be fantastic, and I appreciate y'all entertaining this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor?
I have been involved with trying to get this sidewalk.
Your name and your address, please.
Tom Hall, please.
And. Tom, Tom Hall. Your address, please.
19.
Our clerk needs it for the minutes.
Okay. 19 Brooklyn Drive, Cartersville. But the sidewalk would have a great bearing on downtown Cartersville, opening up the Pettit Creek Trail. You've got a $300,000 trail sitting out there that's almost inaccessible. There's no place to park. By extending a sidewalk out to it, you could have a parking area at the Civic Center, and it would open up that trail, the downtown Cartersville. You could walk out that trail, if you could get access to it, to Castle Road, and then you'd have a walk back up the sidewalk, up Castle Road, a good three-mile walk. And that would open that trail up to downtown Cartersville instead of just sitting there empty. And hopefully, sometime in the future, that trail will be completed as it was planned originally, where it will connect with the Leek Bottom Trail. And there are those in our community and that are proposing, trying to bring the Silver Comet Trail into our trail system, which is not that far away. It's down in South Bartow. And the proposal is, it's an economic gain for Cartersville because it would bring in a lot of bicyclers. They want to have Cartersville as the hub with legs going to Lake Point, Canton, and Rome. Canton, and Rome. And, um, that would be very exciting. And of course, above all, as our community grows, our roads get more and more crowded. A lot of major cities now are going to multi-use sidewalks to get traffic, uh, get people back walking and riding bicycles. I know I'd ride my bicycle a great deal if I'd had access to some type of trail to get back and forth. But anyway, uh, I'm glad to see this project up and going. Uh, I would like to ask, is there any, uh, proposed, uh, completion date on this project?
Well, at this point in time, it's a discussion item for Mayor and Council. We got a number, you know, a proposal number. It's a matter of funding and how we, you know, fund the, if council wants it, funding somehow, whether that's through property taxes, or we wait the next round of SPOS, it's up to the council on it. We'll, we'll apply for grants when they're out there, but right now, there's not grants available.
We funded a study. This is the results of the study, and so we're talking about it tonight. So, um, to say it's underway is a little bit of an overstatement, but it, again, we're getting a chance to, again, we took the step to fund a study to explore the possibility of it. We got a number back, and now we've, just like you, we're just kind of digesting this today and, and seeing exactly where we're going to go, where this fits into the priorities of the many other things that, uh, we're looking to do both recreationally and also redevelopment-wise. Uh, I know there's a lot that we're looking at doing on Tennessee Street as well. So, um, there's always, there's always stuff we're going to be doing to make the city better, and this is just another one of those things that we're having to consider and balance out. Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other discussion amongst council on this at this time?
Something that, that I was mentioning to Keith. I know Tom's not here, Dan, so, you know, annually, what would 1% sales tax in the city generate?
To get you a number, I can't remember. It's probably about, I'd say in reference, two, three million for sure. It might be a little more. I have to go back and look honestly up. Clear the number.
What is it?
Okay. Thank you. We'll close out that discussion item. And notice we have other members of the community here. Is there anything else that needs to come before council this evening? Now would be the time to step forward and speak. Come on up, yeah. And again, kindly, if you would, give your name and your address for the minutes for our clerk, please.
Good evening. Um, my name's Melanie Butt, 23 Sterling Court.
How's it going?
Um, I'm so disappointed in the presence of a certain new store on the public square. And, um, they have a right to be there. I understand that. But, um, I'm hoping that you, the city council, could pass some sort of regulation guidelines or something and enforce them in terms of what is appropriate and allowed for storefront displays. Um, because what's currently in there right now is offensive, and I do not think it projects well the image of Cartersville. Personally, I wish the store weren't there at all, but they have a right to be there. Um, but that storefront, it's just not what I want to see projected for Cartersville. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I would, I would add, um, that having lived in Cartersville for over 20 years, you know, we've seen the square develop into a, you know, it's a charming, um, a lot of nice stores of a different variety, and certainly restaurants of a different variety. And we're, we're in a position to compete against perhaps some communities that have had a head start on us, you know, like downtown Acworth or the Marietta Square. And, uh, further afield, we're, from a tourist commercial perspective, we're also competing perhaps with Blue Ridge, Delonica, and, uh, El J, perhaps. And with Lake Point, Lake Point's going to put Cartersville on, in the minds of a lot of people that might not have otherwise simply because there's a lot of kids coming, families coming to Lake Point for the sports activities. And with Cartersville right there, it makes sense that during their free time between ballgames, you know, you could wander into Cartersville and, you know, any variety of restaurants, that we can have something to eat. And, yeah, frankly, having a, um, BDSM display there in full view, um, might give pause to some parents to, eh, maybe we can go somewhere else for a Saturday afternoon shopping spree. Yeah. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you to both of you.
Carol Wise, 10 Felton Court. And Katie Wilson, my granddaughter. This is sort of weird that we're here to ask about, um, an exception for a fence that's at our home, our town home at Felton Way. Um, we bought it from Smith Douglas in July, and we were, we went through the homeowners, through the Smith Douglas, through, um, Tommy Rosier, the public works manager, to get the fence approved, and it had to go over some easements, um, but we took, said we would take the responsibility if, if anything, you know, if they had to go under it, if they tore it down, we knew we had to build it back up. We bought the town home for her while she's in college, and she has a dog, a big dog, and a lot of the people in the neighborhood, we've already put up fences. We, everybody approved it, and the day that it was, they put the locks on the gate, um, the lady from, oh, code enforcement came, knocked on the door and said, "Fence has got to come down." So, um, we're just sort of in a bind and don't understand why this is, um, you know, it, it comes down to the electrical department. They said that they have to have access to it to read the meters, which we understand they're electronic now, and we have a gate on the fence, and, um, we just can't get anywhere. Smith Douglas isn't helping. HOA was supposed to be here. They didn't show up. So we're just trying to present this, to see what we can do.
First of all, thank you for coming here. And, um, Mr. Lovell, I guess you've...
Ma'am, what is, what is the actual address of the town home?
10 Felton Court.
10 Felton Court?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And if you could, um, come up here, I'm going to ask you to, um, write your telephone number down. I know you probably don't want to say that in public, but, um, what I will do is, um, I will contact the, um, city departments, and I'll find out what the situation is, and I'll, um, relay that answer back to you. Can't promise it will be tomorrow, but it will be by the first of next week.
Good, because I know, I think Tuesday, you know, the 10th, we, they're telling us it's going to be a thousand dollars a fine, a fine a day till we get it down.
Understand, ma'am.
So, okay, I'll give you a...
Yeah. There you go. There you go. Yeah, just anywhere on that sheet will be fine.
Sneaky wife for him to get your number on.
Mm-hmm. All right. Thank you very much, Mayor. My name's Keith Lovell.
You can come up, just, if you would, just wait for her to get back. It'll be fine.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good day.
Hi, I'm Nicole Francis. Um, my husband and I are also a part of that community. Um, so if you wanted to take our number down, too, same situation, we have our fence, we went through the approval and everything, and now it's becoming an issue with the easement.
Okay. There you go. So you happy to do so?
Ms. Francis, where is your address?
Yes, ma'am. It's 22 Felton Walk Boulevard. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. And I'll hopefully be able to give you a call back tomorrow, but if not, it'll be the first of the week.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other business that needs to come before council this evening? I will say, point of personal privilege, October 5th of 1991 was the best day of my life.
Oh.
It was the day the Braves went from worst to first. It also happened, it also happened to be the day that my, tricked my wife into marrying me. I get to spend our anniversary with you all here tonight, and trust me, she's probably real happy about that.
I'm worst at first.
That's right. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Actually, I got a text.